Just to remind everybody, there's a sign in if you'd like to sign in. And do we have any revisions?
Uh, yes, under consent, if you would, under other, it's called the Kaboom, Kaboom Grant. And it is for playground equipment at Estill Springs. It's K-A capital K-A capital B-O-O-M. And it's a grant that their PTLs wanted to do, so I wanted to bring that to you today. But that's it.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have recognitions.
Um, we start out usually, of course, we do not have mountain movers during the summer, but a little bit earlier this spring, and honestly, I think it was around April, that Ms. Belinda Puckett was recognized as the State of Kentucky Food Service Director of the Year. And I don't think that at this point, we had recognized her, but what a great accomplishment. You know, that's now our third employee that's been recognized in a statewide competition. Of course, we had Felicia last year with the Wondelutro Award. Deana Caldwell was recognized as the State School Psychologist of the Year Award. And now we have Ms. Belinda Puckett as a statewide Food Service Director. So, Belinda, if you'd come forward, please, and I didn't get your certificate, I'm sure you got, I'm sure you got a plaque and everything from the Food Service Directors Association, but I would like today to award you with the Medal of Excellence for your good work in food service, and we appreciate you very much. I'm already tolerating you here.
(laughter)
(laughter)
And the other part right now is our summer food service, our summer feeding program is
going on, so. So, we're very appreciative of the work you do for our kids.
Congratulations. Okay, next on the agenda, we have facilities, and we have a construction update first.
Yes, we have Mr. Peter Fisher with us to just sort of give us an update of where we're at with our construction projects. And I don't know if you've been by Estill Springs. If you've not been by there and stopped in, go in and see if you want to see a building tore apart. There's a lot of work going on there. Of course, the roofing projects are just now getting ready to get off about the middle of the month, so Peter's here to give you an update, and Peter, I'll give the floor to you.
All right, well, thanks for having me. I appreciate the time to come in and give you all an update. I'll start with the roofing project, although Jeff kind of summed it up pretty clearly. We've gotten through the contract period of it. Now, we have made color selections, which you all were involved in, and those are going to be reviewed in the field tomorrow. And after that, it's just a matter of getting the material in. That particular project has always been slated to start with the middle school, so we needed to get the metal roofing colors chosen and finalized, and that's where we are. So, they'll start on that just as soon as that material arrives. And as far as Estill Springs goes, there's been a lot more activity going on. The big thing, we've been dealing with a lot of shop drawings and submittals for a lot of the equipment coming in for there. Demolition activity has been at high pitch, fever pitch. If you go in the building, you'll see a lot done. Ceilings are gone. The administration suite looks like a war zone. And the mechanical rooms have all been sort of, you know, been prepared for the new equipment that's coming in. The geothermal well field, the lateral lines, the lateral lines have been placed and the system has been put into the building, but the drill rigs haven't gotten there yet. So, the big push there is to get those in. It's my understanding that they should be in any day now, and he's planning on bringing in three rigs to drill this field. So, hopefully, that will, that will happen. I talked to Raymond. You know, Jeff, I'm going to have to look that up for you. I can't remember. It's not, it's not Moses, it's somebody else. So, yeah, and he, at the pre-construction, he let us know he'd be bringing in three rigs to do the work and that he needed two or three weeks to prepare. And we're right about at the three-week mark, so he should be in soon. And progress on that particular project, they're going gangbusters on getting the new mechanical system installed. I think they're very excited about the amount that they've gotten done in the red wing of the school, which I think was the first one that they were, they were trying to get done. Electrical systems have been put in, and I already mentioned the geothermal line. So, I think that that's probably, you know, other than the fact that they're really looking for all of the submittals to come back quickly, because they're, they're really looking to get a lot done over this summer period, so, and they've gotten off to a good start.
I know what you're saying, that the ceiling grid is almost ready to go back to the original state.
Yes.
Or, you know, that it's close to being finished on that wing.
That is correct, yeah. They mentioned the last thing that they wanted to do was pull out the old mechanical units, and so they still haven't done that, but that'll, that's coming soon.
Do you all have any questions for Peter?
Any concerns from how long or did you?
Not, so far, no. No, they've been doing a really good job. And it will be great to get the roofing project started. That will be a big help, so.
My face threatening would be that they're a little ahead of schedule?
I think that they are, yeah, at this point. Especially, it was good news knowing that he was ready to put ceiling grid back in in that wing already. Any other questions?
Next, we have a change order, it's number two for Estill Springs.
I'm going to ask Ms. Hardy that we table that change order, and that is a owner-ask-for-change order, that's not coming from the architect. So, once we got in there, we really didn't realize what kind of shape that building was in in terms of classroom paint, hallway paint. Hallways was a little bit easier, there's always so much stuff on the walls and everything, you know, it's really hard to tell. And once we got into that building, the paint in that building is in terrible shape. We really, I sat down with Todd recently, talked extensively about, okay, did we have the manpower to be able to do that ourselves? And from the standpoint, we just really do not have contract painters on the staff, and that's a lot of painting. You're talking about, right now, for the two wings, it's under construction, you're talking about 12 classroom spaces, not including the hallways. The office area was already going to receive paint, because it is a total redo. But all your hallways, cafeteria area, the gymnasium area, those areas have not received paint, some of them in 10-plus years. So, I requested a proposal from Momentum to do that. They just, and, you know, they're, they're trying to turn it around and give us the best price whatsoever, but we'll just have to see what that comes back at. If it comes back, that it's not within line, and what usually happens on that, that's an owner, that's an owner-added change order. So, once Momentum would send us a quote for that work, the site department at Ross Tarrant would look at that and say, this is way too much, this is in line with what you should expect. They would tell us what that would be. But at this point, we just don't have, they've had it now for a little over a week and a half. I bet they'll take their time, get it right, and then rush and give us a number that's just out of range, or not the best number that they can give us. So, it's okay, I would just ask that you can take that.
Next, we have to request a finding for a new bus garage on the district facility plan.
Okay, and as we move forward, as you all know, at the last special call meeting, we had done some work in terms of the bus garage itself, in terms of moving forward with building a new bus garage. I did meet with Judge Williams today, along with the county attorney. They're in the process of turning over that piece of property. They're, the industrial board met, the industrial park board met, and now the fiscal, fiscal court has met as well. And they have approved, basically, a transfer of that property to us. Some are right around 8 acres of property that's involved in that lot. So, they have done work with the dean, and a title search on that property, we'll probably have to pay the title search to make sure that KD will want a title search down on that property, make sure that there's no issues there. And hopefully, at the July board meeting, we'll just do a resolution from you all accepting that piece of property. And I think that's pretty much all it will take for us to have that property transferred. But in the meantime, just like with Estill Springs, the district facility plan calls for the renovation of our current bus garage. The renovation for that bus garage on the facility plan is $1.2 million to renovate our current facility, which to me makes absolutely no sense when we can build a new facility for about 1.7, it's almost maybe 1.8 on the BG1 that was approved a couple meetings ago. So, we're going to have to, again, ask the facility planning committee to come together and do a finding that would involve changing that from renovation to building a new facility. So, the first process of that is the, for you all to request the LPC to meet again. So, that would be the recommended motion.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that the LPC reconvened to request a finding for a new bus garage.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
He not been against the bus garage.
It will take a little while to get that together, because we want to go ahead and make sure the current finding for Estill Springs was approved. The change order is in the process of being processed, but will be approved rather shortly, because at KD's direction, they're the ones that gave us the path to move forward. So, we approved that at the last meeting the board did. We're now waiting on the contractor's signature, and I think you're all's signature, and of course, we may have to re-sign that document. We had already signed it.
Yeah, I'm able to approve it, yes.
Okay, so, it'll go in and be approved, and the, the contract has already been amended for that project to include all nine alternates now, so that's already done. We want to let the dust clear just a little bit before we approach KD again with another change to the facility plan, if you know what I mean. So, we'll just take a little bit. Hopefully, by the July meeting, we will have reconvened that committee, and we'll have something ready to go at that time.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have consent items.
Peter, thank you for coming down, and I'll see you in Roland tomorrow, I guess, about 11:15. We will be looking at the roof color tomorrow at Estill Springs. If a couple of you come by or you want to, it's about 11:15. You can see maybe a larger sample of what that metal's going to look like. And, and then hopefully, next Wednesday, we'll have our first progress meeting for Sorry to interrupt you.
No, you're fine. We're moving on to consent items.
Um, I know there's a, I know there's a bunch of consent items here, and it's never the intention of the board to ever hide anything. I will just go through, and these are normal end-of-year business items. You know, the treasure report, payment of the bills, I got all those too. We had the second reading of the policies, which is C and D, on the recommended policies, the annual leave policy. We got to approve our depository bond, our treasurer's bond, community eligibility, which allows all of our kids to eat free, that's item G. Item H is the food service procurement certification, which that's us receiving or being able to purchase our items through food service. And the indirect cost is the food service program does reimburse the board for the cost of running that program. We have a memorandum of agreement for Apperson Center of the Bluegrass, which is some counseling services for our high school students. Dual credit with Morehead State University, we have to approve that contract. You have to consider the renewal of the board attorney contract. We have a medical leave in there, and that one is in line in terms of offering that. The salary schedule, based on the changes that you have done throughout the year, there are two requests in there, and that is, one of those is for a bass fishing coach, which the person that had done that before had done it for free. So, we felt like we needed to add that. The other one is a weightlifting coach position, which is a position we'd had in the past. So, I do feel like that's in line in order to do that again. And I have gathered assurance from the high school that it will, it is not just a football position, it is for fall, winter, and spring sports. So, it will be all sports teams, female and males will be able to have access to that. Check sign-in authority, something we always do. There's a school-wide fundraiser request in there. The biggie that I'm proud of, and you all should be proud of, is Q, is it's our first Chromebooks for our ninth and 10th graders. We've looked up and down at what is the best way to do this, and we have decided that it is best for us to lease those Chromebooks instead of buying them straight out. There are some advantages to leasing them. It will, over the lifetime of the three- and four-year contract, and there's a reason why we're doing three-year on one group and four-year on another, and it's really too long to go into. But at the end of that lease, there's a $1 buyout, so we would be able to allow our students to purchase those Chromebooks at the end of the lease period, and it just gives us a little bit more ability to do that. And over a three-year time period, it was less than, the difference was like less than $7,000 between buying them straight out and leasing them, so we just felt like that was a better option.
And that's a three-year lease, right?
One group is for a three-year lease, and that's because LW, that sophomores are getting those, so they'll be there 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. The freshmen will be there four years, so those 160 or 70, well, there's 190 of them.
And the life of these are five years?
Four to, four years is what they guarantee, will give us insurance on. They, they'll last longer than that, but they're insured for three and four years based on the length of the lease.
Let me ask you a question. I know we could, we could buy them for a dollar and let the kids buy them. Could we also buy them for a dollar and use them for seventh and ninth grade? Get a year or two out of them, possibly?
It's possible. The, when we talk about like a normal PC, normal PC, you know, we could buy it one year and it lasts 10.
Yeah.
With Chromebooks, Google only guarantees that it will receive updates for a maximum of five years. So, the ones we're buying are actually older models that will still be upgradable up until the end of the lease. But with the, once they end, there's no guarantee that we'll be able to make them work on our network. Now, they, the students, when we were talking about allowing them to buy them, they literally could bring us a dollar out of their pocket, and we're just going to let them keep the Chromebook. And that way, we can turn around and get a new set of Chromebooks that will have a five-year lease, so that we can actually allow, you know, use them for the entire duration that Google's going to allow us to keep them.
And when it's fully implemented, LW, after, after three years, we're going to have seven through 12, so that they're going to have them, 7th graders would actually have them for six years. There'll be some students that won't buy them, and we'll, we'll put those back for spares in case one does go down or doesn't work, because ultimately, there'll be some students that won't purchase them or won't want them. So, we'll keep those sort of for spares, but eventually, it really won't matter about trying to refurbish them, because they're going to go through a six-year period anyway. So, the time they get through to end, this first two years, there'll be some leeway there, but after that, there won't be any. So, it'll just sort of run its course once we get to that point.
And I mean, this, that's not just a, something that we, as Estill County came up with, that is the standard process that Bullock County, Fayette County, Madison County, you know, they've already done this. Woodford County was going back, and they did have Mac, and I think they're doing Chromebooks now. They have seen that this is the typical duration outside of Google being able to update them. This is a typical duration you can expect them to last, being in a student's backpack, being taken home, brought back to school, charged every night, that's a typical duration. You know, this is, when you think of Chromebooks, it is a simple, low-cost to buy, even though you don't really think of the cost, it's a low cost, $200 is $200. But in terms of getting a PC into a student's hand, when typically, that's going to range around $700, $800. And these things are actually an education addition, which means they're rubberized housing, they're more durable. But we still have to take into consideration that a student is not going to take as good care of a Chromebook as they do. So, you know, we have to also know that it'd be nice at the end of the lease that we had 300 and some of them, that, oh man, these are in great condition, you know, and use them until we can no longer use them on the network, but unfortunately, that just doesn't happen.
Probably not going to happen. And I think, you know, this, again, like I said, and the reason why these are able to work is because everything is on the network. So, all the software that they will access is loaded on our network, so when they get on the internet, that's how they access the software. As part of the device itself, it has very little memory or ability to hold a, hold some type of software program.
It's a glorified way, right? Where we've switched everything over to Google, everything these students are doing is now out, it's what we call cloud-based, it's all out in the web. Gone is the days of, oh, I left my homework at home. Because they're doing it on the cloud, then it's always out there for them to get to.
And so, you'll know as a board, so you feel good about this, we do have training set up for our 9th and 10th grade teachers and any other teachers that want to access that training. We're paying for that with our Title IV funding. And so, we're going to make sure that not only the students this past year has had keyboarding and basic computer operations, so the students that are getting the computer have been trained on Google, have been trained on the Chromebooks, so they know how to use them. Teachers are going to be trained on how to use those in instructional practice. And this coming year, our 7th and 8th graders are going to receive that training, so next year, our students 8 through 11 will have those computers, and then the following year, it'll be 7 through 12. So, it is a, it's a big investment. The $125,000 that you budget in, the budget covers that investment, it helps cover the teacher, so we can continue to keep it going. Through that lease, we can continue to pay the teacher and keep everything going. So, it's definitely the best means for us in a cost-efficient way to, basically, over time, at any one time, to have basically 100 and, it ends up being like 120 or 30,000 dollars worth of computers, but our payments are not that, so that we can keep the process going. Also, you have the employee handbook in there that needs to be approved, the certified evaluation plan, if you have any questions about it, Ms. Isaacs is here, but that is the new CEP for all of our employees, our certified employees. And then, of course, I added the Kaboom Grant, which is a grant that Estill Springs, when all the dust settles out there, we've got to make some changes with the playground out there, because it is in the front of that building, it needs to be relocated, and they need more appropriate playground equipment. Their boosters, not their boosters, I guess their PTO is going to raise the money for the playground equipment when the time comes. So, those are the consent items. If anybody has any specific questions about any of those?
I do.
Yes, sir.
In the employee handbook?
Yes.
Do we have anything in there I couldn't find it about dress code?
This, the board has never passed a dress code policy in the school district for staff members. It's something that's never been done. It is something that you all have the discretion to do if you wish to do so. What I, or the way I usually try to handle that is I handle that upfront with our principals before the school year starts, and generally, they address their staff. If there's anybody or there's any question about what somebody's wearing, usually, it comes down here. We've had less calls this past year about dress than we had in the, in the...
We've had several in the past.
Yeah, and we didn't have maybe one or two this entire year, and two may be high. I can remember one right now, but I don't want to say it was just one.
Well, the reason I brought that up was all the complaints two and three years ago.
Yeah, and I think those have settled down, and I've not had them. I don't know, Ms. Isaacs, if you've had them or not as the assistant superintendent, but I do think that our principals are addressing that with our staff. It's not something I think right now that you would have to go out there and do a blanket wide policy, but you sure have the jurisdiction to do if we have to at some point in time. Anybody else?
Do we have a motion to accept the consent items?
I make a motion that we approve the consent items.
Okay. Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I will accept the consent.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. We have the superintendent's report.
Let me give you this. This was on the Kaboom Grant, just so you all have it. I've got it. And I will work with them to make sure, there's two different programs they can go about, and Felicia, if you don't care on the Kaboom Grant, just remember that we, when they contact us about that, I want to speak to them directly about that, because there's two different programs they can do, and I want to make sure that we're in the right one. Okay? Superintendent's report.
Yes, sir.
You have your personnel actions in there, and those are sort of fluid right now, but I do think that we're getting to the point that we have a few open positions, but a lot of those are going to be filled here before July 1. There'll be a few that, a few that probably come open now for the rest of the year, that they can, any teacher can leave us up to 15 days prior to the opening of school. As you heard from Peter right now, the construction seems to be moving at a pretty good pace. We'd already, always told him what our opening day is. And we will probably try to move forward with opening day, even if we have to maybe back school off a couple days to, for construction. We'll still try to have our opening day. That way, it sort of gives us a date that we know, that 15-day deadline for employees. But we'll probably still try to have an opening day. We're trying to figure out exactly right now what we're doing, but I still, I still believe that we'll go to Estill County High School for opening day on the scheduled date according School for opening day, on the scheduled date according to the calendar. School may not start the following day, if we need a couple extra days, but I'll let you all know, we'll know better here at the July meeting. So, personnel actions, there's some MOAs in there that we gave you, of course, community ed grant, read-to-achieve grant, math achievement grants, we, those are renewable every year, and those are in there, just so you all know what those are. My activity report, for you all to look at. There's for you all, and just some of the things that I've been involved in during the last month. One thing there that I apologized to everybody towards the end of the month, I sort of had an issue with one of my eyes, so I was out several days, but got a good staff here, they were able to keep things going. As you notice, we did hire our middle school principal, Ms. Andrea Williams was hired as our middle school principal, and that was conducted on June 14. I tell you, I really won't brag on the Carhartt Community Event, that was a great event, that several of us was able to go out, and anytime that we can support our community, I think it's very important that we get out there to do that, and just a couple things I wanted to point out to you all. Got a free toboggan, and then some people got there too late, and they didn't get one. There's a lot of fussing going on about that, I'll just say, but it's what the get, the early bird gets the toboggan, in that case. But it was really nice, and it was a great activity that was done by them. And really, that is, that is the activity.
Okay. So, next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's evaluation, and I think we're gonna go into closed session to discuss that, and when we come back out, we will give an overall rating.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session, this time.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
And we'll report back to you, the results of the evaluation. I don't foresee it's been a long time, seriously, if you wanna wait around. We just gotta, we just gotta...
Okay, so we during executive session has have discussed the superintendent's evaluation and the overall rating is accomplished.
And I would like to say that it's a pleasure working for this school system and working for this board. We are a team and nothing gets accomplished without teamwork. And there are times that we disagree, there's times that we're in agreement, but that is all part of healthy conversation within any organization in terms of how we conduct our business. And we've got a lot of big things going on. If you've not had an opportunity to look at the website lately, look at the website to see some of the accomplishments during this past year. As we move forward this year, this is a big year coming for us. We should start seeing some dynamic results in our schools with some of the work that we've done with continuous improvement. The construction projects are exciting as we're moving forward. And I've got meetings scheduled tomorrow with KDE for career and technical education and the Career and Technical Center in trying to get legislation passed this January for funding of the operations of that school. That's going well, so there are some big exciting things that's going on in our school district and it's a pleasure to work for you all. It's a pleasure to work for the people of Estill County. And I truly do believe in servant leadership that I'm here as a servant hired by the people of Estill County to protect their kids and provide for their kids and also to advocate for our employees and also to be a part of this community and move this community forward because the lifeblood of this community is this school system. And I appreciate the job that you all do. It's a thankless job. It's not a lot of pay, not a lot of pats on the back. More training required every year, things that I think that sometimes I just don't understand, but you all do it all. It's a servant position as well because it's definitely not a paid position. So as a team, we'll move forward and look forward to year four of superintendency.
I make a motion we adjourn. All in favor? Meeting adjourned.